Kill the Zoom meeting as a matter of the first order of business.
All right, everyone, we're gonna get ready and call this meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Molly, if you could please assist with the roll call.
Sure thing. Mayor Atwell.
Present.
Alderson Dean.
Here.
Eiker.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Grimmer.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Kassen.
Here.
Valdi.
Here.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will roll into 4A, which is our first special order of business. Presentation of the City of Della Field Police Department's Distinguished Service Award to Captain Bob Hagan.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Landon Nyron with the City of Della Field Police Department and Chairman of the Awards Committee for the Department. And I'm honored to present the department's Distinguished Service Award, which is presented to a member who engages in sustained performance or activities which are clearly beyond the expectations of that member's current assignment and which exemplify the highest level of professional commitment to the mission of the department. In this instance, since Captain Hagan joined this agency in July of 2002, he has taken an active role in providing both proactive services and leadership, enhancing operations throughout his tenure with the department. Some example of Hagan's contributions include technology, policy development and review, field training and evaluation, both as an FTO, and overseeing the program as a whole, boat patrol, squad maintenance and fleet management, hiring and personnel management, evidence collection, preservation, and storage. It is rare that one member provides the significant amount of positive influence over an agency as Hagan has with our department. This award serves as recognition for the efforts Hagan has made on behalf of the department and the community we serve. Congratulations and thank you on behalf of the city.
Great, thank you. Well deserved. All right, we will move on to 4B. Presentation of City of Della Field Financial Statement with Independent Auditor's Report and Required Audit Communications to the City Council for the year ended December 31st, 2020 by City Auditor Kevin Krasinski of Johnson Block. Kevin, already up there, perfect. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah, and introductions of myself. I'm Kevin Krasinski, an audit partner with Johnson Block. We've been doing the city audit for a number of years. And with what we sent over, there is a final copy of the audit. It's about 85 pages long. We also have an audit communication letter. And then we also have a financial overview, which when I gave presentations in the past to a number of municipalities, that's usually what I would present off of. I don't think you want me going through the entire thing. And when I talked to Tom, he said, you know, to try and keep this to five to seven minutes. So I'll give you the five to seven minute version. If there's any questions, feel free to ask. Our role as auditors is to get an opinion on the financial statements. Financial statements are used for a number of purposes. I mean, you go out to the markets to get money, so you get ratings. And they want assurances that the financial statements that they're getting adhere to accounting principles that are required, what we call GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. What you look for is an unmodified opinion. That's an opinion on the financial statements without any modifications, which is what we have. Or we gave the city. So that's what you strive for. The content of the financial statements themselves, that, you know, they're the responsibility of the city. There's a number of different things. And there's the management discussion and analysis, which is a summary overview of the financial statements themselves. The fund financial statements, when we come in and audit and when we, what we do is we take a look at the funds that you have and substantiate the assets, liabilities, revenues, and expenditures there. There's a number of different types of funds that you have. You've got the governmental funds, which is your general fund, your TIF districts, your debt service funds, your capital projects funds. And then you have what's called business type funds, which is water, sewer, your stormwater. The business type funds follow the full accrual basis of accounting, which, you know, your long-term assets, long-term liabilities are reflected on the financial statements. The governmental funds, your general fund, and that follow the modified accrual basis, which it just measures current assets and current liabilities. So there's differences in accounting when you look at your water utility, your sewer fund versus your general fund. The, there's a consolidated set of statements that's called the government-wide statements, where all the governmental funds are consolidated into a separate column. And then we add in your long-term items, your long-term debt, your long-term capital assets. And then all of the governmental or the business type funds are also consolidated into a business type activity fund. And then there's a, those are actually the first two financial statements that show up after, once you get into the basic financial statements. Probably the longest section which is included in there is a notes to the financial statements. There's a summary of significant accounting policies that's included. And then all of the major transaction areas that you've got cash, your receivables, capital assets, any inter-fund transactions, long-term debt, fund equity. You've got your WRS pension fund. There's footnotes associated with those that are included in there. And they reconcile and tie back into the numbers that are included within the financial statements. So that's the content of your financial audit. When, you know, you have to send this out to, you know, rating agencies, all of those items are included within there. There's also what we have in there as a required audit communication to the, which outlines a lot of the scope of services that we do. And we also put together some management letter comments, which I think the one that we had, a couple that we had in here are ones that we've had in the past. There are audit adjustments that we have in terms of material audit adjustments that we come in there to assist in terms of some of the transactions primarily related to capital assets and things that there were adjustments to the books that we made as a result of our audit. Some of the other comments that we had in there is, you know, you do have internal, good internal controls, but there is sometimes overlap between cash receipt processing and utility billing process. Pointed out that there was a net loss within the general fund. I know we've been talking about that for a few years. It was less than what was budgeted. And I believe that was, you know, what was one of the impetuses for your referendum that you had in there. You've had, you know, turnover in the finance department. You've had turnover in the accounting system that was utilized. I think this would be a good time to also get an accounting, you know, update some of your accounting procedures. You've always had really good, well-documented procedures, but particularly since you've had a change in the accounting software that you've had in there. We also, I think, one of the areas that we looked at was the capital asset. And with the turnover in the accounting software, there was a lag in terms of getting the capital asset listing into a system. And I think you now purchased it into the new module. It's a good idea to take a look and review the capital assets because I think there's some fully depreciated items on there where you should look at to see whether or not they need to be retired. It won't affect the net dollar amount that's included within the audit, but it should be reviewed. The final comment that I had in there was, you know, there's a new lease standard out there. So we're recommending municipalities get a list of all of their leases that are going to be, there'll be changes in accounting requirements for those. Key financial results, I talked a little bit about your general fund balance. It decreased by $189,000, which was better than the budgeted deficit of $222,000. So you did well there. The unassigned fund balance is about 21% of your expenditures. Generally, what I see for Wisconsin municipalities is they want between 20 and 25% in unassigned fund balance. You know, and one of the things with Wisconsin municipalities is usually your end of the year fund balance is the lowest it is at any one point in time because the property tax collections are front-loaded. Any of the December cash collections that you've had for property taxes get reflected, don't get reflected in terms of revenue until the following month in January. So at the end of January, you pretty much, most places will have at least 65% to 70% of the property tax revenues collected at that point in time. So it's a little bit of uneven cash flow, but it's better than it's front-loaded. The water utility had an operating income of $297,000 and an increase in cash flow of $397,000. The sewer, you know, had a positive cash flow, you know, despite showing an operating loss. And a lot of that is related, I mean, the reason that is, is because the operating loss is a depreciation on your infrastructure assets that you've had. And basically, you know, that's a non-cash expenditure, but you've already had the infrastructure either paid for or in some cases contributed when developments had occurred. You know, one of the other financial metrics that you look at is your general obligation debt limit. Your debt limit is $83 million. And your GO debt that counts towards the limit is a little bit less than 15 million. So you're very, you got a very comfortable financial position. So that was my brief overview. Comments? Questions?
That was a great narrative. Very thorough. I appreciate it. So yeah, one of my questions before you started was about a recommendation as far as, you know, we did have a couple of retirements and a couple of new faces and our new accounting software. Do you have a specific recommendation on how we should attack that, you know, going in? Just as far as address it, I should say, to make sure that people are comfortable with what the new software is and the new staff. I mean, what would your, what would your recommendation be for us to? Back up any requests for Tom or recommendations to Tom?
I mean, I think from our standpoint, I mean, you know, municipalities is my, is what I audit. I mean, and it's always, I mean, when we come in there to do audits, I mean, we take a look at, you know, risk factors. And, you know, when there's ever turnover in finance positions and turnover in the software, it's always, you know, it'll be a little bit trickier. And you had that plus all of a remote environment. And I think you guys went through that very well. I mean, it's, I think the software that you've got, you know, I always say whenever there's a software change, there will be pain. It's just inevitable. But you're through that already. So I think from that standpoint, what you can do is just make sure that, you know, everybody has what they need. So.
All right, I believe, I believe the staff that we hired was familiar with that software already. And you're a resource, I'm assuming, for them to reach out if they have any questions or.
Yeah.
On an ongoing basis.
I mean, we've been available, I think, so.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
The main resource would predominantly be the software vendor.
Great. Any other questions?
Well, I was wondering about the 55 million in accumulated depreciation. Who decides on writing off assets, I guess? And I know exactly what we're trying to do is get the books to not, you know, to be in accordance with what's really out there in the field. And I'm sure there's old roads that have been replaced.
Yeah. I mean, there was a new standard, you know, well, it's 20 years, getting close to 20 years. It was a big, big change in standard that required infrastructure to be depreciated. That wasn't there before. And, and I, I mean, at that time, I think you hired a company to come in there and and do a fixed asset study. And that's where a lot of the original numbers came from. There, you've got a software. They identify the assets. I just think it's to look at it to make sure that some of the items that are fully depreciated, the question that we have is it's still in service. And in the case of the streets, most of them are in service. But, you know, if you have overlay or things like that on the streets, that doesn't necessarily have to be capitalized. That's kind of a maintenance item. But, you know, still, and it's for any type of asset, just not just infrastructure that you would take a look at that stuff. So.
I guess I'm just thinking from consistency standpoint between municipalities for collecting data. And maybe that's all over the place. You publish this stuff and.
Yeah, I would say there's, they're all over the place. There may not be consistency in terms of how diligent some places will do that. But, I mean, you know, I mean, I think, and again, the places that really care about this is the financial markets. And when, when it came to be that capital assets were gonna have to be recorded and depreciated for municipalities, that people were wondering why. And it was like the financial markets wanted to know whether or not the entities had, did they have fully depreciated software, fully depreciated infrastructure? That's gonna require a massive, you know, influx of capital to get them back. And I think that was the main reason that they've done it. But, so.
All right, any other questions? Being done, well, great. Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to 4C. Presentation by Mary Lou.
Sherkey.
Sherkey. Okay. Senior Vice President of Municipal Government Banking at Town Bank regarding proposal for City of Della Field Tax Collection Services provided by Town Bank. And first of all, let me thank you for doing it for free all these years.
Oh, you're welcome. You know, that's one of the things that we really appreciated doing for all of the municipalities that we worked with. I think with COVID-19, obviously, we faced some challenges with social distancing and trying to keep our branches open. So I think that's the main reason that we are looking at proposing making some changes. Just because we did have some branches that we did have to close down, two or three of them over the period where COVID was most rampant. And so the impact to the municipalities that we're collecting real estate taxes for in person is obviously whether or not they would be able to travel to different branches, be able to send the payment into Waukesha County. So what we did is we did some very thorough research and came up with three different options for the committee to consider. So.
If you could just try to use that mic.
Oh, sorry. I'm not really used to doing a microphone. Usually I'm just talking to a group, so my apologies.
No, no worries. We just want the people on TV to be able to hear.
Okay, sorry. So yes, so I would say COVID-19 has really changed the way that we collect real estate taxes in many cases for municipalities. We did have some branch locations that had to close because of COVID-19. And so we really took a look at the way that we collect real estate taxes for all of the municipalities. And if you have the presentation there, you can just go ahead and start. Obviously, that's our building in Heartland.
Beautiful building at that.
Definitely. And then if you go to the next page, I just wanted to introduce the team of municipal bankers that we have. We do have a special group. We're one of the few banks in the state that have a group that does nothing but municipalities and school districts. We've been doing it for about 25 years. And we have about 75 clients in municipality, school districts, utility districts throughout southern Wisconsin. And so Wes is the leader of the team. And then there's myself. And Jamie Voss is our treasury management person. And then Shannon, and then also, most people will know Claire over at the Della Field branch. Can go on to the next slide, please. And so I hope that most people know that Town Bank was started in Della Field in 1998 by J Mac. So again, we just appreciate being a partner with the City of Della Field and the relationship that we've built over the years. We did merge with Wintrust, who is our parent company, in 2004. And that really gave us the capital to be able to do all the things that we can for municipalities and school districts. If you take a look at the next slide, that really describes what our process is when we collect real estate taxes. Essentially, it's a very manual process. We don't have any automation. It's literally taking a letter opener or more or less having the person drive up through the drive-through because of COVID or going into the branch in person. And so we did process 1,836 payments via the residents. And it literally does take two people to actually be there when we open up those envelopes. And in many cases, there are questions. We do have residents that show up without the coupon. And so we have to actually go on the Waukesha County website and look it up for them. Sometimes the checks don't have the correct dollar amount. So there's a lot of questions in terms of, hey, the mortgage company gave me more than what my taxes are. Can I get the money today? So we do have a lot of questions that we go through. And sometimes there's just comments about the real estate taxes themselves. As you know, people always have a comment or two to make about real estate taxes. And so it really has had a pretty significant impact on our branch staff. None of our branch staff can take off during the holidays. And if you think about the holidays, most people want to take off sometime. And so we don't allow them to take any time off. And I think especially in the COVID environment, we just had people more or less leave the bank just because they were just scared of COVID. And so we did have branch staff shortages that really played into the impact. It's one of the things that, you know, unfortunately, in today's day and age, I think a lot of industries right now are struggling with finding help that they need. Go on to the next page. So there are three different options that the majority of the municipalities that I work with use. And so if you take a look in Waukesha County, about half of the municipalities use Waukesha County for the full service. That means that they see ACH payments, they see tax collection via check. And they also will process every single payment. And they charge $2.30 per candy at Waukesha County for this service. Right now, you are paying $1.60 because they are collecting for you anyone who sends in their payment via mail to them or via ACH. If you think of people who have mortgage payments, a lot of times the mortgage companies will send via ACH the payments in one bulk file. And so right now, you're currently paying part of that fee right now. $2.30 is what it would cost you to have them do everything. And that more or less would relieve some of the duties that I think Tom and his team actually take on today in terms of having that information sent to them directly and not really having anything for the City of Della Field to do for Waukesha County. The other option would be to have the tax payments come here and use staff or in some cases interns. When I did my research, I did reach out to some municipalities that collect their own real estate taxes and they do use interns. Or they hire people at a cost of about $15 per hour is what they guessed, estimated is to the actual cost. The other option that we have worked with several municipalities is doing a lockbox. And so what the lockbox would be is that the people would send, your residents would send the checks into this lockbox, which is a PO box. And essentially, we would process those payments in our state-of-the-art facility. And so essentially, there's automated machinery that opens up the envelopes, that separates the coupon from the payment. And everything is electronically photographed. So that way you receive copies. And so does Waukesha County receive copies of every single envelope and every single payment. So realistically, those are the three options for you to take into consideration.
You mentioned issues with processing. People don't have the right check. They don't have the right amount. They don't have their coupon. What percentage of that? If we were to use the Dropbox, what percentage of those would be rejected or incomplete or problematic? Based on your anecdotal or actual experience?
So it really depends on the individual resident. It's hard to say. Some years, we do have a lot of people that have a lot of questions and sometimes people don't. So it's really difficult to anticipate. I would say you're probably looking at 10% of the people having a situation where they don't have the correct information. And so what happens is we reach out to the municipality and then you have to reach out to the resident and say, either, you know, you didn't sign your check. Sometimes people don't sign the bottom of their checks. There's a variety of different things that occur. And so that would be information that would be sent to Tom and his team. So he would either need to go out and talk to the resident and say, you need to send in a new payment. You didn't send in the correct amount. So from that standpoint, they would be taking on that responsibility.
And Waukesha County takes on that responsibility otherwise? Or does Waukesha County receive it and then kick it back to us? You, Tom?
Amy?
Amy, can you come up to the mic, please?
Waukesha County will process it all. And we just get payments from them. So they take care of kind of those questions and everything.
They take care of all the problems?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I do have references for the municipalities that we work with that do use Waukesha County. If you would like to have people to reach out to, I did reach out to three or four of our clients. And they would be willing to speak with the people on the committee to share their experiences.
So right now, we have two systems. We pay Waukesha County for the ones that show up there. And you take the other ones for free.
Correct. That's what we were doing historically.
So you're proposing a little different way of taking them and then charging us for the lockbox?
The first year would be at no charge, just. The first year would be at no charge, just because it's a relationship that we've had with the city for 10-plus years. And so obviously, as interest rates start to increase, the way that bank fees are calculated is based on the balances that you have in the bank, and that's an earnings credit towards whatever fees that you use. And so essentially, we are discounting it very heavily. Typically, we would charge more towards $1 to $1.20 for this service. But because of the relationship that we have with the City of Delafield, we would be cutting that cost in half to 65 cents per item. And then if interest rates, which is obviously something that we're discussing, you know, longer term, where interest rates are going to go, that earnings credit would offset that fee. And so you could get back to the point where you'd have zero cost. It really just depends on how much you have in deposit at the bank in addition to where interest rates are. Historically, there are times in the last 25 years that I've been doing this where many municipalities and school districts had excess credit just because interest rates were much higher. So it's really hard to determine at this point what the cost would be.
So, and I understand why you have to collect for this, but the nature of your service will be changing a little bit this year because you'll go to the lockbox instead of taking doing the work at the branch. And if there are discrepancies, then we will have to get involved on the items that come through your bank versus the county, they apparently take care of everything for a larger fee.
That's correct.
And I was a big advocate a long time ago for us to use the county or another service because our staffing is tough, is tough at that time, too. And there were demands to keep people open here until 5 o'clock on New Year's Eve. And so I think it's always been a good service for our taxpayers, and I think it's cost-effective. So you're just saying the service is changing a little bit and probably will cost us some money from your side. But if we rejected having you do anything, we might be up to $2.30 per bill from the county incident. Is that, because they're not billing us $2.30 for all 2,500? I think there's 2,500.
County's billing us $1.60 right now.
Okay. What is it, for every tax ID or key?
Yeah, for every tax bill.
Key, okay.
$1.60?
Yep. It would go up to $2.30 if we had them do the full collection.
So 90 cents on 2,500 entities?
70 cents.
70, 70 cents on 2,500 entities?
And for you to do that service, it's how many cents?
So 65 cents is what we would be proposing to charge. This year, we would do it at no cost just because of the strength of the relationship. And then going forward, obviously, we would like to have a conversation about the balances that you have in the bank. The more balances that you have with the bank, the more credit we can give you to offset those fees. And so, you know, there are circumstances where it would cost you nothing depending on what kind of balances that you would keep with Town Bank.
If we go with your lockbox thing, staff still has to deal with the exceptions. But if we go with the county's 70 cents, we don't have to deal with any exception.
Right. And that 70 cents difference on 2,500 entities is, well, is 1,700 bucks, 1,750.
Not a big number we're talking about.
It's not.
You know, I prefer, from a customer's standpoint, to keep the pattern the way it is right now.
Well, the one thing that'll be lost is they won't be able to go into a local place and drop their taxes off.
They can at the county, but then we get billed for it.
Yes, they would have to drive to the county in order to do that. But I think our strategy would be to communicate effectively with the residents starting in October and to have notices at all of our branch locations for the residents that are Town Bank clients, and so they can prepare in advance. We would also recommend that you place announcements on your website. In addition, if you have a newsletter that you send out on a monthly basis starting in October to communicate those things. We are proposing making these changes with three other municipalities. And so one additional municipality is going to go with Waukesha County, and one's going to go with the lockbox, and we're waiting for a final decision with the third municipality. The other thing that happened this past year that created, I think, a realization in terms of the hiccuping could cause in cash flow for a city is the fact that the post office put from one municipality that we work with mail in a wrong mailbox. And so literally, we had stacks of mail that was put in a dead letter box that was the box next to the branch. And so there were literally a couple hundred tax bills that got lost in the mail because the post office put it in the wrong box. And so as you can imagine, that was very frustrating for the residents. It was very frustrating for the city, and it was very frustrating for us when we're like literally looking under everything for these tax bills. And as luck would have it, we, someone saw like, boy, why is there like a little white thing sticking out of this dead letter box? And it literally had a stack this high of literally every day, the postman was putting these tax bills in the wrong box. And so it had a huge impact on this municipality's tax flow, or I should say, cash flow, because essentially, they didn't collect the payments. And then they actually had to go back and work with the county to get this corrected. And so it was a logistical bad situation for everyone involved. Does anyone have any questions about what a lockbox is? If you think about a credit card payment, that's where your credit card payments go is to a lockbox. And so typically, you'll see an address on there, whether it's Milwaukee, whether it's West Dallas. In some cases, you know, there's other areas of the country depending which credit card company uses. Everyone understand how a lockbox works, or should I explain how a lockbox works?
Might as well explain it.
I thought I knew, but no, I don't think I do.
So yeah, so I guess the best example is a credit card payment. And so when you make your credit card payment, you write out the check, and then you put it in the mail, and it goes to a PO box. And so the processing center goes to that mailbox, and it literally is a physical locked mailbox, and they pull out all the mail twice a day. And then what they do is they put it on a conveyor belt, and it tears open the envelope, and it separates everything between the envelope and the coupon and the check. It takes a photo eye of everything, and so you have that as a permanent record. And then it uploads all of that information into a file. So if someone calls you and said, I sent my check on this day, you can actually go back to that image and say, well, it's not postmarked until this day. And so you do have a good way of record keeping, so that way, when people do have questions, you are able to look at the check, you're able to look at the envelope, and you're able to answer any questions that they might have. Because we're checking the box a couple times a day, you should be receiving your funds much quicker than you would if we were just doing it once a day or if we're waiting for someone to actually show up at the branch. So typically, I would say that's the reason why many large corporations use lockboxes. It's for manufacturers, it's for credit card companies, anyone who has probably more than 500 payments per month typically use a lockbox to gather their cash.
So you're processing those payments, like you're the ones that are accessing the lockbox?
Our employees are accessing the lockbox, that's correct.
But that's not like, it wouldn't be the city accessing?
No, it would be us. So essentially, the only thing that you would be assisting with us is any questions that we might have. If someone puts in just a check and doesn't have a tax key on it, sometimes people have multiple properties, and so they'll give you one check, and they won't write anything in the check, and then you have to try to figure out what five properties they own. So that's really the biggest challenge that typically we have is people will come to the branch on December 31st, 4:55, and say, here's my check, you know, process it. And we're just like, okay, you know, which are the tax keys? And like, you literally have to go in, and you have to look them up one by one. Then there also is sometimes some challenges because we could have the town of Delafield and the city of Delafield. We do have some municipality clients or residents that show up, and we don't collect taxes for them. And then when we say we don't collect taxes, they're not very happy. So it really alleviates all of the questions, and it really puts the responsibility onto the county. And this is the process that the county uses. So they have a lockbox, and that's how they process all the payments. The way that it works is there's an actual line at the very bottom of the tax bill, and that's how it determines what credit it goes to. So they would be working with you to create that tax coupon.
So Amy and Molly, with what Town Bank is proposing, does the effort that would be required by staff seem to work for both of you?
I think it's tough to say at this point because it, we've kind of had our hands off. So it, it's, it's hard to say how many errors we would expect because we.
10%.
Not having.
Right around Christmas.
I know.
When you guys are really fully staffed, and nobody's on PTO.
Well, but the point is the money's in the bank. And if there's discrepancy on December 31st, there's a couple days you can correct the record. You don't have to stand there at 5 o'clock and correct it. I would assume, we're getting the credit.
Yeah, we're not even, we're not even going to be looking at those payments until January something.
Exactly. So I don't know that that's that, I mean, compared to standing at a window and resolving it early, which we want to do for a customer.
Right.
We have the cash. We have a record, we have all the record they've given us. So then if there's some, if there's a town of Delafield payment in there, we're going to have to deal with that in January.
Well, the reality is, if you use a lockbox, it's not going to post because there's not going to be the appropriate Micker line on the bottom. Whether it's, if it actually gets sent to Waukesha County, the town of Delafield would get their payment because it'll be on the bottom of the Micker.
Yeah.
So on that note, if there are discrepancies, like somebody has this, paying the wrong amount or whatever, is that still going to post? Or would that then get kicked back to us first?
If there's more than what the taxes do, the information goes to you into Waukesha County to correct. If it's less, the same thing happens, you get notified, but it's up to you as to whether or not you want to accept that payment, if it's less. If it's more, we kind of say, okay, you can give them their money back after the fact. If it's less, then it's up to you as to whether or not you consider that to be paid.
So I just want to interject. The December 31st payment is not the actual tax bill due date, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the December 31st is like the tax bill payment for people who want credit for their taxes for that year, which to some degree is a big deal for that person. But if they walk in the door and their things aren't right, I mean, as far as like a staff level, doing it on January 1st, you know?
That's not, that's very true, and most people, I think, understand that. But I think there's also a large number of people who don't necessarily understand that. They think that December 31st is the due date, that they have to get it in before that.
That's the biggest problem that I see is the people that are going to be mailing in their payment, wanting their stuff done, wanting to have that receipt in their hand, and then being able to reproduce those receipts on the date that they, that say the date that they want them to, but we can't because there's not a person collecting them, and we didn't touch their.
But if you have, if you have a postmark December 31st?
That's, that is for the due date.
Yeah.
So like the, the county, when I worked with McQuanigo, the county only took the postmark date for the actual due date. That was the only thing that they really considered.
That's January 31st when it counts, or July 31st.
I would say that the majority of people have the capability to go on to the Waukesha County website pretty quickly. I think they're very good in terms of posting those payments. And so that way, the individual can actually go on to their tax key and be able to verify it. And I think most people, when they send a check to their credit card company, you know, they're not asking for that physical receipt. They trust that when they send it to that PO box, it's going to get there just because it's pretty consistent, whether it's your mortgage payment, your car payment, or your credit card payment. I mean, I personally don't check unless, you know, I get a notice saying where's, you know, your payment is late. But for the most part, I don't check or verify. I just know that it's cleared my account, and I get a little alert on my phone saying the check has, or your account has been credited. So I think because people have the trust in that process, I think you're not going to have as much angst. I think when people just have someone stamp a receipt, there's a little bit of concern, like, okay, well, they stamped my receipt, but it was just a lady at the teller window stamping my receipt. You know, I want to make sure that it's actually paid because you're not actually verifying it online. You're trusting that this little sheet of paper is the one that if the IRS comes to audit you, that they're going to actually look at.
The county does send a receipt, even for the ones that are paid at Town Bank. So they will send a physical receipt. It just won't be right away when they pay.
Instantaneous.
Amy, is that receipt going to then read, like, when they come in? It comes in on January 2nd? What is, what date is the receipt going to?
I would think it's the date that they received the payment. So that would be what you technically use for your taxes.
Okay.
And how many did you process of the total last year?
1,836.
1,800 out of 2,500.
And as you can imagine, having one office.
A lot of people using your, I think Waukesha County is the easier, more streamlined option, even for a cost of, increased cost of 17. Yeah. But that's a lot of people kind of being displaced.
Well, that's why I think having that communication early would be very helpful. And they will have the envelope included, so if they do just write out the check and put it in the envelope, they won't have to think about it. But again, we're really going to put signs at our branches saying, you know, just to let you know in three months, when your tax payments are due, that essentially, the process is going to change. And we think that having that clear communication, because I'll be honest with you, I think the majority of people who live in Delafield bank with Town Bank, just because most of the times when people are actually coming in to pay their taxes, it's they're doing other business as well, it's very few people who just come to drop off a payment and just walk out the door.
Not a super important reason in our decision here, but you said that, you know, we get credits based on the amount of money that we have in the bank. Other than this, what other ways do we get to use those credits?
So it's any of the products and services that you're interested in using from the treasury management standpoint? And so, for example, we have wire transfers, we have automated clearinghouse, we have positive pay, we have all the fraud prevention services that most municipalities take advantage of. And so all of those products and services, you get a credit towards whatever fee that you would incur for those services. And typically, because of the relationship, we discount those pretty heavily for you.
Okay, thank you.
And the other thing that it helps us, too, is anytime there's a lending opportunity, we take that into consideration. If you need to have, whether it's a general obligation note, something short-term like a line of credit or a term note, we actually take that as part of the relationship, and we're able to give you a much better interest rate if you have a depository account with us than if you are just borrowing on a standalone basis and don't have any other relationship with us. And I'll be honest, Jay has a very soft spot for the City of Delafield just because that's where he started the bank. And so he tells me all the time that, you know, this is, in his mind, where it all started for him back in 1998. And so he talks a lot about that small little yellow house in Delafield, so.
All right, any other questions?
I guess I have just one other question. If we do go, end up going with Waukesha County, people still have the option to mail in their checks to them, right? Or would they have to go online?
No, they can, they can walk in, they can mail their checks. And like I said, anyone who has a mortgage payment and escrows already, their mortgage company is making that payment for them. And so with the refinance of mortgages that we've seen in the last year or so, I would say that the majority of people are probably going to have their mortgage company sending in that check rather than having to pay that check themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Very appreciate the details.
Well, thank you. Anytime that you have questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you much.
And again, we appreciate the relationship. So thank you for being a valued client of ours for so many years.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so are we voting on this now per the agenda?
Yeah, we are looking for direction from council on what we'd like to do as far as tax collection this year.
I'm inclined to ask Amy and Molly what they prefer, and you, Tom, because we're faced with a change regardless from the status quo. Doesn't matter to me if people, what addresses on the, on the envelope, right? But if it's, it seems like Waukesha County offloads the questions that you'd be directly interfacing with customers with if they have them, you know, if they're through with Town Bank. And so that seems like a plus, but I don't know, what is the consensus with staff?
Amy, I know when you and I talked, you thought that those additional services that you would have to do if we went with Town Bank, that they would be pretty minor negligible. Do you want to comment on that?
If we went with Town Bank, you're saying?
Right.
Well, the way it works now is you send the daily, well, usually daily report that matches up to the deposit. And it would just be, and then we also get Waukesha counties. So it's just making sure. So it's just making sure those two reports and those two deposits a day match really. So it's, it's more than just tracking the ones from Waukesha County.
So you're tracking two reports as opposed to one longer report?
Yeah.
So just if I can interject, Waukesha County would have access to this data from Town Bank as well if you wanted to share that information with them. And so she would be able to pull those reports. So you wouldn't have to send a report. She should be able to just go on to online banking as long as you give her access. And then she can just download that information without you having to send the information to her.
You, if I'm understanding, Town Bank is collecting, you said 1,800? So, so from a homeowner taxpayer perspective, Town Bank has been the convenient place. That's thirds of the collections going through Town Bank. So from a customer point of view, not using Town Bank, I think would not be the best choice for our taxpayers, if I'm understanding.
But many of them used them in person, and that's no longer going to be an option. So one, either way, people are going to need to learn a new process.
Oh, boy.
And you're not going to be able to go into, I don't think there's very many people, but you won't be able to go into Town Bank, but the mailing address will be something associated with Town Bank. That's, that's the only way you'll even know Town Bank's involved.
So of that 1,800, how many showed up in person? And I know you don't, can't estimate that, but I'm asking you too.
Um, well, I would say that, I would say about 50% of the people actually would come in person as well just because many times they're doing other business. And so like I mentioned, Town Bank is a very popular bank here in the country, and so we have a very strong customer base. And most of the time, people would, you know, cash a check or they would do whatever they were doing and then also just drop off the payment. Surprisingly, because of COVID, we had people who were actually using the drive-through for doing their tax payments, and we literally had lines back to the street because it, it literally takes about five minutes per tax bill because we literally have to verify the information, we have to make sure it's accurate, and we also double count it to make sure that we're not making an error. Because anytime that we make an error, obviously it's a huge impact to you, it's a huge impact to the resident. And so we had people sitting in the drive-through for five minutes while we were writing, handwriting all this stuff and then putting it into the spreadsheet at the end of the day.
So from two-thirds down to a third, which is not, which is still substantial. Yeah.
I, yeah, I mean, it sounds like everyone's kind of neutral. I mean, does Town Bank care?
Um, we, we just, we just want to make sure that you're happy. And so obviously, we want to make sure the residents are happy. And so I put a lot of time into doing the research and finding all of the different options. You know, half of the municipalities already use Waukesha County, so I think from their perspective, I think that's a pretty strong endorsement of Waukesha County.
But with the county, you might be subject to the whims of what they're charging you.
I think that you can count on the county to be pretty reasonable and fair.
I think if we're, in my opinion, if we're going to be presenting a change to the people, I think it's going to be easier if we move it away from Town Bank than if we still offer Town Bank as an option, but you can't go in. I think that's going to be more confusing. I think you guys are going to end up fielding a lot, having to turn people away who don't understand why it says Town Bank on their, on their envelope, but they can't go into the branch. If we just say we're not doing it with Town Bank anymore, everything's going to Waukesha County. That keeps it really simple, and you guys aren't going to have to deal with.
Yeah, because essentially what the, what the address is going to say, it's going to say City of Delphiel PO Box. And so Town Bank is not going to be in the address any longer. You're going to be the address.
Oh, okay.
But I, like I said, you know, when you take you.
Yeah, I, I don't know that that's going to be better.
Well, like I said, if you want to have some references, I can give you references of municipalities that we work with that use Waukesha County. And so they might be able to comment about the, the transition. And then also too, whether or not they're satisfied with their service. I think that might be a good thing to take into consideration if there is concern. I just know that they can get the best possible discount because of the volume that they're putting through the process. And so if you're looking at the, the most affordable, you know, the volume discount that they're going to have, they might even be able to lower the price because you're going to have more municipalities using the county because of the change that we're considering with four municipalities in Waukesha County.
You expect the county to lower their fees based on volume?
Well, maybe.
I don't expect that.
Well.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion.
I motion we transition our 2021, 22 tax collection to Waukesha County.
I second that.
All right. Is there any discussion?
And I originally was for staying with town, but after our clean discussion here, I, I think I support the motion. I think we should try it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Tensions, passes.
Great, thank you everyone.
Thank you for all the detailed information. All right, we will move on to item number five, approval of minutes of June 21st, 2021, please.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions, passes. All right, number six.
Second. Jim.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six, City of Delphiel citizens' comments. Anyone that would like to speak to citizens' comments?
Hi, I'm Maria Luther, the owner of the Smiley Barn at 2420 Milwaukee Street. I'm here today to talk about need for a food truck ordinance, any ordinance. I'm really not even particular about what's in it, just something that meets minimum constitutional requirements. Now, this issue came to light for me a few weeks, well, actually a couple of months ago, when a young entrepreneur approached me about putting his food truck on the Smiley Barn, Smiley Barn's property over the summer when it wasn't at festivals. I said, sure, because I like helping other young entrepreneurs and, you know, it could have increased some food traffic to the barn. But I said, you have to get approval from Delphiel. And I never in a million years thought he would get approval from Delphiel. But he came back and he said that he had. He had called the main number for Delphiel. He'd spoken to a female representative who'd put him on hold. He'd waited while she came back with some more information and said that yes, that was permissible. It was clearly communicated that the truck would be at the Smiley Barn, which everybody knows is not a house. We all know the Smiley Barn. And so in reliance upon that, he made plans to go ahead and do the opening. He purchased supplies, he hired employees, he publicized it for all of his following on social media. And most importantly, he gave up valuable time looking for an alternate spot for the summer. Two days before the grand opening, I received an email explaining that I would be cited as owner of the barn if the food truck opened. So after inquiries, I was told that there is a rule, that food trucks are allowed on residentially zoned property, but not on commercially zoned property. I've looked, I can't find this rule anywhere in the Delphiel municipal code. It appears that there is nothing specific to food trucks in the municipal code. I studied about this for a while because that just didn't seem right. We were no longer talking just about an issue of a young man putting his truck over the summer. We were talking about a big issue. I, as the owner of a res, a commercial property, could never have a food truck, not even if it was for an employee party, picnic, not even if it's for one day, not even if it's on exact same terms as a resident. Why was that? And it seemed to be something out of the blue that was not even enacted as a proper law by this body. So I am very concerned about this. I, I actually thought about it for a while and I came back and I said, you know, perhaps the issue is that there is an assumption that any food truck on a commercial property will be operated open to the public. Perhaps nobody's thinking of this idea that I might want a private party someday. So I sent an email trying to clarify. If I just wanted a food truck for one day for a private party of my own, could I do that? I was told that in order to get an answer to that question, I had to pay $150 an hour to the city planner to have her research it. Like, wow, what country am I in? In America, you're supposed to have fair notice of the law. What's allowed, what's prohibited? Laws are supposed to be enacted through a proper legislative process. There needs to be a rational basis for those laws, and they can't arbitrarily discriminate against different groups of citizens for no good reason. For me, this issue is far more important from a constitutional and basic rights standpoint than it is about the food truck, you know, parameters themselves. As I said, I'm just asking for a food truck ordinance. You can do what you think is best for the citizens of Delphiel and whatever content that is. But this situation is not okay. It can hurt people as it did this young man and the situation that happened this past spring. And I am encouraged that it's on the agenda today, and I ask that this group follow through and pass some type of ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. All right, we will move on to number seven, consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there anything on the consent agenda?
Anything, but I figured we'd need a motion anyway.
Okay. All right, I think we're good there. All right, we'll move on to number eight, boards, committees, commission reports. Uh, A, licenses. No licenses. Okay. B, planning commission.
Okay, um, yeah, we did have a meeting since our last meeting. And a couple items that are open here are, one thing, a sign placement for Perkins, I mean, for Olive Garden was resolved. And they received final approval for a sign for the Olive Garden. That's going to be roughly where the existing Perkins sign is, so it doesn't mask our Smiley Barn sign, the Smiley Barn. So, um, so that happened. And a couple items here that are open are, um, item, and we also had an initial presentation from Brian Doral regarding his just conceptual plan to possibly take over the Heartland Sportsman's Club and everything that would be entailed in doing that. And it was quite a volume of public feedback that went from everything from no guns at all, indoors or outdoors on the site, to marginal support for some shooting outside with limited hours under a better atmosphere. And, and so anyways, that's, we're going to end up with an actionable proposal sometime in the future. So keep your eyes open for that because that's always a crowd pleaser. So open issues here are item 8B to A, right? And that is a, simply a extraterritorial certified survey map approval for someone in the town of Delphiel that's combining two lake lots. And that's in the, in the packet, and that was approved unanimously. Recommendation for the council to approve the same. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve that extraterritorial certified survey map.
I'll second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions, passes.
I'll second.
Uh, Matt?
And item B here is update to our zoning ordinances regarding signage. Years back, we're not sure how the disparity occurred, and regardless of how meticulously we go through and review our codes over time, we find that there's some inconsistencies. And this one simply was an inconsistency with this, with the plant commission's ability to grant signage approval inside of certain setbacks in some zones versus others. And that came into play in this particular sign for Olive Garden, where we're inside, the initial proposed location, or even the existing one, is inside of an I-94 corridor setback. Yet, the placement of the sign makes perfect sense. It's allowable in some zoning districts and not others. We just cleared, this is just an amendment to clear up that zoning conflict to make it consistent across all zoning, to, to give planning commission the ability to make that decision regardless. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 781 amendment.
I'll second. Second by Matt?
Was that clear to, I mean, I don't want to, okay.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions, passes.
And item C here, I know, I see our applicants are here. I don't know if there's anything to add, but this is a, uh, the 7Cs property. This was a recommendation from the plant commission that was approved unanimously about four months ago, maybe five, to divide the subject property into three residential lots. The only consideration here that was, uh, had really in debate was the requirement for 100, 100 feet of lake, lakeshore frontage. And dividing it into three lots made it, we ended up with about 14 to 16 feet short on one of the three lots, and it would be the interior lot, which still makes them larger lakefront lots than most of the neighboring properties. So it seemed like a reasonable thing to waive for this particular request, and especially since the property would be turned into a much less intense use than what was there originally. And still regrettably, the 7Cs is not reopening.
Um, I have a question about this one.
If, maybe the applicants want to come up if.
Is it, would you like the applicants to come up?
Yeah, if they could.
Could you guys come up?
If that's all right.
Where is there?
They liked this one.
So my understanding is that the reason that this took four months to come to us was because of the castle proposal. And I've also heard, I mean, obviously not officially, but there are talks of other things going on potentially for the project. And I'm wondering then if that is something that you are considering? Or if this, once we switch this over, is that a done deal then? Then there will be three residential properties.
Well, we're back on the market now.
Right.
Because Chris's, you know, project was not approved by the plant commission or the common council.
Right.
So we're back on the market as a restaurant and as a piece of land as it is and as a whole.
Okay.
So we do have other interested parties that are looking at the property to purchase it as a restaurant, but no one has made a move as of yet.
Sure.
And we would just like to go ahead with this so that we have this taken care of. And of course, it's not going to be made official, and I discussed that with Amy several times back and forth, until we raise the buildings, until the mayor signs off on it, and until it's officially recorded with the register of deeds.
Okay.
And assigned individual tax key numbers.
Okay.
But.
May I interject and just get a name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Christine Weiskirber with 7Cs Restaurant, 1718 Nagawicka Road.
Thank you.
Ramona Weiskirber, Comer, 1830 Nagawicka Road.
So we'd be, so essentially, we'd be granting approval for them to go ahead and get these lots certified and marketable this way. And whether you choose to or not is still at your discretion.
At their discretion.
Based on what optimal proposal might land in your lap or be presented to the city.
To give us the ability to start marketing the lots when the time is right so that we don't miss out since we've been, you know, hanging on now for quite a while.
I think it is important for them to have our approval.
Yeah, I agree.
Because they want to get an offer. Now, there are dates, since I'm the register of deeds.
Are you part of the mission?
There are dates that after this approval that has to, the thing has to be recorded. And I know that's, there's 60 days and 180 days, and there's all these rules in the statute, so.
Okay.
You want to be aware of that. And your title company will know that.
And what is that, Mr. Veron? Do we know?
If we approve this, I think it's six months. I think you have to record within six months.
Within six months, okay.
And if they don't, then they can come back here if they.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We just see them coming in sometimes eight months, and then they have to go back.
Right.
Schedule a meeting and.
Yep.
And we really want you to be able to get as much money as you can. So I, hopefully everything's in order.
So are we understanding the, the timeline correctly? If it's approved now by the common council, then we have to raise the buildings that are right now intersecting over, you know, some of these lot lines. Then the mayor and the city planner sign off, then we go to the register of deeds. Is that, so that we're all understanding that correctly?
Well, we're the last ones, but everything has to be signed by the time it gets to us. But there are timelines. And I don't know them all here because there's a list, but it's about six months.
And where do we find that timeline?
We have a brochure on it at our office.
At your office, okay.
But your title company will know it too.
I guess I just wanted to make sure, like, you're here now to get the approval for the.
the three lots, but you're not asking it to be, I mean, you're still marketing it as a potential whole property and then the three lots, correct? Am I understanding that? Like, you, you are still going to have it listed for sale, like, somebody could buy the restaurant still, or they could, you could sell off the three lots separately? Okay.
We just, in the interest of time.
Right.
Would like this taken care of, so that if we don't have someone come through to purchase the restaurant, we can immediately start marketing as this and move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think there's been, there was some miscommunication, misunderstanding where people, when this was initially approved by plant commission, that somehow you were bound to this particular plan.
Right.
And I think, I think it's in everyone's interest, community-wide and you personally, to have the latitude with the most flexibility, because we don't know what might be in store for, like, the best, most wonderful plan for the property. I mean, we had one that wasn't received well, and we want you to have the flexibility, in my opinion. I don't, and I, and I hope that things work out great, you know, and I, I regret the fact that there was lots of, you know, white knuckles and grinding teeth over a simple offer and somebody trying to follow through a process. So thanks for bearing with us in the process. It was brutal, but I'll, I'll make a recommend, I'll make the motion to approve the certified survey map for the division of this property into three single-family lots as proposed.
I'll second. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions passes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The journey continues.
Yeah.
Okay, we will move on.
That would be it for plant commission.
We'll move on to C, Lake Welfare Committee.
Yes, we had the annual lake meeting at the new pavilion over at the yacht, yacht club. Had several guest speakers come, and they'd gone through a few different things, including the wellness plan that was put together by Sewer Pack, as well as our police officer, Hagan, was there, and just questions and answers. So.
About how many people attended that, roughly?
I think it was about 25.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a bad night, it was the weather, and, yeah, thought there'd be more.
Okay, is that the end?
That's it.
Okay. Great, we'll move on to Park and Rec. Mr. Grimmer?
Park and Rec. Park and Rec had a meeting June 28th. The main topic of discussion was discussion on the St. John's pier. Park and Rec decided that to make suggestions and recommendations to council and not come down in favor or opposition to the pier, but instead to treat the pier as they would treat an entry point into any park, I guess akin to a road. So they didn't take a position on the benefits or detriments of the pier, but they said if the park, if common council did decide to provide a pier, that there were a few considerations to make. Those considerations are with the increased traffic, they wanted signage and lighting directing folks towards Genesee Street instead of along the little walkway between the pond and the lake. There was concern about the safety there. Additionally, they wanted better signage and lighting for the bathrooms, anticipation that those bathrooms would become used, and also consideration for safe access for kayaks. So those, those three considerations, if the, if the St. John's pier is approved. And that's all.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to E, Public Works Committee.
Well, the Public Works Committee spent quite a bit of time talking about their, their path plan, and nothing has been completely cast in stone yet, but one thing that we, we did review is we're, we're talking about Highway C. Long-term, maybe it should be a 10-foot path. If that's the case, we should have help paying for it. So I don't know if it's going to be recommended this year in the budget. On the other hand, the simple path that's clearly going to be in the plan will be the continuation of the Nagwicke Road path to the north. That may be in the budget. And with that regard, it's not noted in the minutes, but I want to note it here that the next meeting is August 4th, and we're going to start that meeting on Nagwicke Road and, what is it, Fairlakes?
Fairlakes Parkway.
Parkway.
Yep.
And that is to physically review the site where that path might be going. And then we will jurne and come back here and continue with our work on the, do a overall path plan for the city. There is a goal of trying to get our recommendations done by this fall, and at some point have a, a public meeting where it's discussed as presented, so. I have two people here that were at the meeting, if I'm inaccurate. And that's, that's on the agenda next time, is the paths.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. We will move on to Delhard.
Next Delhard meeting is tomorrow evening, so nothing to report until after that.
Before the Bucks game.
It's going to be a really quick meeting.
Okay, we'll move on to G, Police Commission.
No meeting.
No meeting. Okay, we'll move on to H, Library Board. Salty.
Library Board met last Tuesday 13, and I just have some updates on the summer reading program, a little bit of bragging, because had some real good results. 667 participants. Interestingly to me is that you expect little kids, and a large section were little, but there were 141 adults, yay us, who participated, and they're already just shy of 300 who have completed the program. It's mostly virtual. People earn little gifts and coupons that are donations, so no funds were used. And they're doing a lot of online activities. There've been 4,700, a little over that, activities completed to earn little badges and things. People have just jumped into this, and the library folks are very excited about that. Over 4,100 hours of logged reading time, and just shy of 560 books have been given away. These are withdrawn books or books that were donated. Again, nothing was purchased, so libraries making, with the Friends of the Library are making funds through working with Culbers locally, and they are starting to open up more nights when you can go through and get the Culbers fix, and a little bit of that money goes to the Delafield Library. So that's it for now from the library.
So is it fair to say that the summer reading program was 100% online?
It is. There are a lot of programs that the library is doing that are in person, but the summer reading program has been essentially.
Online.
Virtual, but it's just been fine.
Yeah, I was just curious what the.
Yeah, it's been great.
Because you planned for that pretty far in advance, right? It's not like you decided what you were going to do this summer.
Yeah, it's been cool. They've had movies, I think there's one Saturday that is freeze, but they've been having a lot of really good family kind of movie night outside. Actually, I stopped off at the library this morning and they had storytime outside, so it's kind of neat. Things are going well.
Sounds great, thanks. Okay, we'll move on to I, Zoning Board of Appeals. Now, that's dark, that's black, so I'm assuming no meeting? No meeting?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move on to J, Promotion and Tourism. Mr. Barron?
We had a meeting and were starting to discuss the budget for next year, and at this point, we're still assuming a fairly conservative revenue picture, and we'll know more in the next quarter. The hotels are, are full on the weekends for weddings, still during the weak traffic is, is slow. So, and, and I will say that the, some of the new members on the committee have been pressing our Z2 marketing folks to get better data, and they have. So, so there are some reports that have been attached to the agendas, if people are interested in what kind of data we're collecting, but it's much more focused on, on response to our, the internet is where you spend all the money, but it's hard to say what are you getting for it, so. They're, they're, they're getting the hits, and we're putting, making a record of it, so.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Lake Country Fire and Rescue, Mr. Grimmer, was there a meeting?
We had a meeting back, I don't think I reported on it, July 19th.
That's tonight.
No, that's tonight. We had a meeting back in June, prior to the 4th. We sold the ambulance, I think that's about $12,000, to the city.
Is that the check you got, Tom?
Something about that. HS Squared, which is the public charter school, was ranked the best high school in the state of Wisconsin, and Lake Country Fire and Rescue participates to a great degree in some of the program offerings at that school, and so they're very proud of their participation in that. Lake Country continues to monitor response time, including turnout time and travel time, and we should have more solid data in the months ahead, but preliminary data is very encouraging. And budget-wise, we think preliminary, because collections always take time to get to us, but things look like they're in line with actual versus budgeted, but our report from our billing agency states that collections are becoming more challenging as insurance is requiring more and more information and requesting that we resubmit claims. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, well, no unfinished business, move on to Mayor's Report, 10A1, Accept Resignation of Larry from the Promotion and Tourism Commission. He moved out of state and was doing a great job on the.
He was.
On the group, and we're sorry to see him go, but he's leaving.
He was, he was one of the people challenging all the, all the, all the assumptions in marketing.
I'll move to accept Larry's resignation.
I'll second.
Seconded.
Jim?
Jim.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions passes. Okay, I have number two, Mayor Appointment to Replace Larry, Mark Schaefer.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions passes. Okay, we'll move on to new business, number 11, A, Consideration of Request from Olive Garden to Accept the Fee in Lou of On-Site Stormwater Management as Allowed by Municipal Code Section 16-319I as Recommended by the City Engineer and Director of Public Works. I believe that'll be you, Tom.
That would be me. Yeah, so our, our city code does provide a provision that allows for this. Basically, the Olive Garden restaurant will be decreasing the amount of impervious area compared to what the Perkins restaurant had. It's a slight decrease, but in any event, when we get a redevelopment and there, actually the impervious area can go up by a slight amount and still qualify for not having to do any kind of stormwater management from a stormwater quantity perspective. So since they actually went down, they don't have to do any stormwater quantity. Our code does still require some stormwater quality treatment, but the reference section of the code identifies that when there is a stormwater facility downstream that's maintained by a responsible party, that we can do the fee in lieu of. And we do have the Milwaukee Street Stormwater Pond, the regional stormwater pond that the city built, that we maintain, and since that was providing treatment for the, the Perkins restaurant, stands to reason that it can, it has the capacity to treat the Olive Garden restaurant. And so Olive Garden came to us and proposed the fee in lieu of, and we had them put together a cost estimate that looks at the initial construction as well as the long-term maintenance of it, that was reviewed by our city engineer. We came up with the dollar amount of $48,000 for the fee in lieu of, and both my court, the city engineer, and myself recommend that the city do accept that fee in lieu of.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions passes. Okay, we'll move on to B, Resolution Authorizing the Insurance and Sale of $712,670 in General Obligation Promissory Notes for the Funding of the Adoption of the 2021 Capital Budget. Tom, again?
Yeah, so, you know, most years when our borrowing is over a million dollars, we generally go out to the municipal market for bonding. When we're under the million-dollar threshold, then the cost of borrowing generally outweigh that benefit of the lower interest rate that we can achieve. So we did go out to some local banks to provide some quotes on some terms for a 10-year callable option, and this is to fund the 2021 capital projects, and we are recommending that the city approve a note with Wachshau State Bank, which is a 10-year callable option at 1.55%.
So moved.
I'll second.
Matt and Tim? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions passes. Okay, we'll move on to C, Use of American Rescue Plan Act Funds. Tom, again?
Yeah, so things continue to develop with regards to this funding. One pleasant surprise is that the amount we're receiving actually went up since the last time I talked to you. The last time I talked to you was 740-some thousand. Now we're up to 780-some-odd thousand, 788,000 and change. And the other thing that we've determined in reading through all the guidance that exists now, and that guidance is still developing, there's still a lot of questions about things, but one of the key things that municipalities can use this for is replacement of lost revenue due to COVID. And in implementing the rule, they've determined that to determine, to find out how much revenue you've lost, you have to look at your entity as a whole, so not, not even just general fund, but as a whole, including all the utilities and everything like that, capital and whatnot. And then they're going to compare the years of 2020 through 2023 to the base year of 2019 with an inflation factor, and any difference in revenue is just going to be assumed to be related to COVID. And it generated a unique circumstance for us, where in 2019, we had a one-time revenue source of a $650,000 developer contribution towards a roundabout that we recognized as revenue that year that we didn't expect to receive in future years.
But they didn't care.
Darn it.
So it provides us with the, certainly the justification where we can use our full $780-some-thousand as replacement of revenue that then needs to be used to provide certain municipal services. Those municipal services include police services, fire services, public works services, things where, providing anyways. So that seems to me a logical way for the city to go, considering our budget constraints and, and our deficit. There are other, are other options that the city can choose. We can use it to help property owners and business owners that have been harmed by COVID. If we do that, we would have to find out, we'd have to develop a process where we distribute funds based on how people have been impacted. It can't just be kind of fixed amounts to individuals and things like that. There's also provisions for investing in certain types of infrastructure, specifically water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So that's where we're at. There's not a hurry to make a decision on this, and in fact, it's probably better, you know, given my discussions with our auditor today, that. know, given my discussions with our auditor today, that the Treasury is issuing additional guidance coming out, and I know in the memo, we had recommended that we're looking to get the council to agree to the replacement of lost revenue, but I would say, hold off for now and let us digest some of the additional guidance that's coming out. But for tonight, I'd be interested in hearing any thoughts from the council on, you know, what I shared with you.
Can you...this revenue would be used to...as replacement costs. Under the proposal that you've given, it would be used for paying for the things that we already are paying for. How would that affect our levy limit calculation? Are we adding this...isn't this...is this money added to the baseline of our budget? And then subsequent years, when that funding falls off, now we're...
No, this wouldn't affect our levy limit calculation at all.
Just increase our balance, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, another piece of information I'm still trying to digest and understand and asking a lot of questions about is one of the provisions is you can't use these funds to increase your rainy day fund, which is our unreserved general fund. So then, in my mind, it becomes kind of a shell game where we say, okay, well, we're using these funds to pay for police salary, and then we're going to use the taxes we received that we're going to pay...use to pay for police salary, and we use that to increase our unreserved fund balance, so that we can then use those dollars over a number of years to subsidize our tax levy until we get the economic development that we're trying to achieve, where we can balance the budget.
So that was my confusion. If we can't use the money to increase the fund balance, but we're going to be increasing the fund balance with our other money...money is fungible. That...I shouldn't be surprised that it...that really doesn't make any sense, but...
It's kind of a shell game.
It's very much a shell game. Okay, so then that makes...
It'd be kosher.
So we're going to use this money for operating expenses, and then the revenue that we get from otherwise, we would build up that...we could build up that fund balance.
Or do something else.
Or do something else.
Clearly, there's...you know, as convenient...convenient as that roundabout expenditure was as far as this formula calculation is, the inconvenient truth of what happened. You know, we've got some development projects that were right on the cusp of being realized when this hit, and it's clear that, in particular, the 750 Genecy here, or 705 Genecy. Clearly, there was an impact there, and that's a delay in the realization of a pretty substantial development. And also, same goes true for some things that we're developing in the southeast corner of 94 and Highway C. And so this formula makes sense as far as moving things, looking out in the forward for lagging losses. So I don't think this is as much of the windfall or gift as it appears, as it is an actual compensatory difference from what otherwise would have happened, but it would be nice to get the clarity as far as if we're moving it from our right pocket to our left pocket, based on displacing our operating costs with new revenue. And also, you know, I'd just say that where we had the latitude to do what we, you know, do certain things, we tried our best. We, you know, we waived certain liquor licensing fees, and we lowered and waived other types of rental fees and things. Not huge numbers, but where we could, we moved that money in a time where we weren't sure we were going to get it back. And so I would...I think letting it sit for another month makes sense for us to get the clarity.
Maybe even a couple of months, but, you know, one thing I want to add is I emphasize the $650,000 payment, but if, as you can see from Amy's memo and her calculations, when you take a look at the losses and the utilities and hotels, our total lost revenue is calculated at nearly 1.1 million. So even without the $650,000 payment, we'd still be able to utilize $450,000 of this for replacing lost revenue, and that's just for 2020. Then we'd be able to do the same calculation for 2021, 2022, and 2023. So it's quite possible that even without that $650,000, we may get to the point where we would have still been able to use it all for lost revenue anyways.
But it's...I guess it's clear we can accept the revenue when it comes.
Correct.
Half the money, I think, is already in our account.
It is.
Good.
So any other questions about that, or things you'd like to see for the next meeting on this?
I would like to know what the...if anything gets looser as far as direct, you know, what our options are for direct...you know, you mentioned, like, I don't want to pick winners and losers and have some sort of contrived formula, but if there's some way where we look at property taxpayers as a whole, if there's a way to funnel things directly there, as opposed...we're kind of doing it anyway as far as offsetting operating costs.
Right.
But if there's something else, it would be more immediate shot in the arm for the people that...
I've been watching to see what any other municipalities come up with for defined programs or anything. I just haven't seen anything yet.
I don't want something where there's unintended consequences, where some people win and other people don't. The way it gets distributed most evenly, I think, is with the...is offsetting operating losses.
And if we follow this process, that's something we could also do in the future.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right. We will move on to 11E, Continuation of Providing Virtual Access to Common Council...
No, you skipped D.
Oh, did I? I'm sorry.
We got D.
D, Review Events of the Smiley Barn Food Truck Issue. Review of the Current City Code Policy Regarding Food Trucks and Possible Updates of City Code Policy Regarding Food Trucks, as requested by Mr. Grayson.
I just wanted to have some kind of a discussion about this. It's a very fluid topic, obviously, and I don't know that any resolution could be gotten tonight, but I just wanted to try and bring forward the conversation to see...to try and digest what's going on in some other communities. Oconomak is in the process right now of considering significant changes, and just what kind of a thing we'd like to see going on with the food trucks, and make it clear. So I don't have any particular...
Did you have a suggestion on what we might do, or do you need to understand what the rules are now, or...
What I'd like to do...what I'd like to see is some kind of examination of or comparison of what other municipalities have and where we can improve upon those kinds of things, just to try and make it clear. So by looking at other municipalities, and I was looking at the Economak one earlier, and like you said, they're in the middle of updating theirs now, but establishing some kind of a fee and just having everything upfront, because it does seem to be kind of confusing. It seemed like, regrettably, there was some confusion about how this whole food truck issue with the Smiley Barn had transpired, and I just would like to try and make sure this doesn't happen again. So I didn't have any particular ideas, but just wanted to get people's sense of, you know, what we'd like to see with food trucks. We currently are pretty much prohibiting them, if I understand correctly.
No. I'll let Tom answer that.
Yeah, so my interpretation is that they can go to the Plan Commission and seek approval under a section of the ordinance that talks about that temporary structures on...that aren't on foundations, such as, I forget the exact wording, but it's kind of like vendor carts and trailers and things like that, that the Plan Commission has the discretion to approve those. But in order to get approval of something like that, you would have to go to the Plan Commission for a site plan approval, a plan of operation approval, and signage approval. And...
Has Bel Air got that approval for their trailer in their parking lot, where they sell coffee out of that? Is that how they're able to operate?
Who, Belfry?
Belfry, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, we...that came here.
So I'm going to give a...so I've asked the city planner that question, because I don't see where they have, and she's looking at it. I know we approved their expanded outdoor seating over there.
The coffee stand?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm pointing in the wrong direction.
Yeah.
The coffee...that...no, that was a separate item. That was approved.
That was a separate item. I remember it.
That went through Plan Commission in here.
I've been there. It's Wednesday night. It's awesome.
Okay. And I know, and, you know, our code could definitely use some clarification, because I look at that section of code where it says vendor cart and trailer and stuff like that, and I think a food truck could qualify, and I know Kent looked at it, and he says, no, that...those are all things that don't have motors, and since a food truck has a motor, that wouldn't qualify, and...
But Nico's was a trailer. Didn't have a motor.
Nico's was a truck with a motor.
Yeah, did you see it?
It was a trailer.
No, it was a trailer.
It was a trailer. So I've got...
No, it was parked in front of the Smiley Barn.
But it wasn't a motorized...it wasn't a...it wasn't like a van. It was a trailer.
It wasn't...
No different than what they have over here, just longer. Let me just give you a couple...
The leaders...
It wasn't a motorized. It wasn't a motor. Right? That's right. It was just a trailer. So that's why I didn't understand why that was any different than over here.
In any event, clearly, they'd have to go in the Plan Commission.
Yeah, I think the one answer that didn't seem to be clarified early is that on almost any business property, the Plan Commission has a lot of say over what's going on there.
Like, if you want to repaint a building...
And it's usually a plan of operation, right?
If you want to repaint your building in different color, you've got an approved business plan of operation that includes the site appearance, design review, all of it. So if you're doing something on a piece of property that's a commercial property, where you've got a business plan of operation, and a site review has been...is a part of that, it's simply...I was asked this point-blank when I was called by somebody, asking, "I'm sure you know what's going on with the Nico's truck fiasco. What can you do about it?" And I said, "I don't know what's going on. What's trying to...what's trying to occur there?" And he said, "The person told me that they just went to operate a food truck in a parking lot at the Smiley Barn." And I, off the top of my head, and now I've been on the Plan Commission over 10 years, but off the top of my head, I said, "Well, the two avenues to go would be a special event permit, saying I've got something going on for this, you know, this...for X period of time. It can be a week, a day, a year," or a Business Plan of Operation Amendment. And just go to Plan Commission. There's a simple form you fill out, and you show up, and you tell us what you want to do, and you go thumbs up or thumbs down. It seems really straightforward to me, and I'll give you a few examples. One is the Divine Redeemer Lutheran School just north of 16 is in the...is in the city of Delafield. Their classrooms were busting at the seams, and they needed to have an temporary expansion for a classroom. So they put a tractor-trailer up alongside the building and created a catwalk over to it where they had a classroom there, and they asked for a year's approval. Well, that year went by, and they asked for an extension. Well, they had it for four years, but each year they kept coming as they were waiting for building expansion. That's one example, and that went back about six years to about two years ago. Another one was the Popcorn Wagon at the BP. That was one that was first seasonal approval, and they came back every year and got approval when they asked for it.
Corn stand?
There's a...I can't remember the name of the juice, Java Juice or some tropical juice truck that we had for two summers here that was parking in different areas that were pre-approved and authorized by the Plan Commission. And in other cases, like the Belfry, when they initially got their building plan of operation, they requested to park their catering truck in the parking lot, and we refused them to do it, because it was enhancing the signage and it was defeating the purpose of having, you know, it was taking up...it would have taken up six parking spots. So all the things that go into consideration there are impact on traffic, what it looks like to the community, what it does to the surrounding businesses. So I have a hard time believing that someone who's in this business, I believe they were...Nico's was operating in Oconomak and was asked to leave, that someone like that would take just a cursory opinion verbal over the phone from a new municipality without getting a name of who they talked to. It seems really far-fetched to me that they would run with that and invest a bunch of time and money into their summer plans on it, when anybody else would have been able to...if showing up in person or getting an email circulating would have given them a really solid answer to work off of, and they'd be operating right now, probably, because that's a dead parking lot right now. I doubt that the Plan Commission would approve it with Olive Garden there, and I'm sure Olive Garden would be the ones that would protest them having a business in, you know, that would be encroaching on their parking. But I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't...something smells wrong about the whole series of events that went down here, and frankly, the existing process where something like a food truck or a temporary vegetable stand, there's another one, a corn stand on 83 across McCullers, they'd come in for an annual permit to operate that.
I think...
Putting something hardcoded as far as you meet all these requirements and you're granted permission isn't as palatable to the other businesses that are competing for customers as getting Plan Commission approval for individual additions to your business, because you wouldn't be fleshing out all these other types of impacts. So I...I'm just...I'm just saying, I think it's sad what happened here, but the article in the paper, I thought, painted the city in a really, really bad light, and I'm not buying how this thing went down. I think something suspicious...
Well, I think most people don't make things up, so clearly, communication wasn't what it needed to be.
Did they call the town of Delafield?
Just saying. It's really easy to armchair quarterback. I have no knowledge of the details at all. I'm just saying that I have had more than one complaint over my nine years on the Common Council from folks where they thought they understood, and they may...you know, you can blame them, but we're public servants here, and our job is to communicate clearly, and if we don't, then we don't blame the other people. We say, "I'm sorry, it wasn't communicated clearly." I agree with you, Tim. Folks, you know, probably should have done these things, but I also resist the notion that our, you know, folks who are trying to just simply set up a food truck would, like, make up a story just to try to make us look bad, which is about the only option. So clearly, it wasn't handled well. There's no need to point blame. I went into our city's website, into the municipal code, and I couldn't find anything on food trucks.
It's not there.
There's nothing. So, you know, you could say they're naive, or they're just like, you know, if there isn't anything, and you call, and maybe you, you know, like, again, should have. I resist armchair quarterbacking on any level, but what we need to do as a municipality is maybe just be a little, to borrow from George Herbert Walker, is to be a kinder and gentler communicator, and just be a little more even-handed with, "Wow, yeah, no, we need to go before the Plan Commission, absolutely." And maybe even have a cheat sheet for folks who are taking a phone call or recognizing, like, when...what we could have done, rather than telling the applicant what they should have done, what could we have done to avoid this? And I'm not placing blame on anybody, but it just...the communication wasn't clear, and that just happens in life. You know, we had a thing with a library sign, and it's been a circle, and how long did it take us to solve it the other day?
20 minutes.
Not even that. I mean, it was ridiculous. We went out with a tape measure. We stood there, we talked, boom, we had it, because we talked to each other. And so I'm a big believer in, you know, what can we do better as a city, and without placing blame. It's awful, the treatment of whoever that person was, it just breaks my heart, but then what can we learn? You know, I believe it's not the errors, it's, you know, it's what we can learn from here forwards, why I agree. I don't appreciate...I didn't see the article in the paper, and I'm glad I missed it.
It was pretty harsh on the city, that it was all of our fault.
And I...my issue with that is that, I mean, when you're saying, "We need to communicate
better," well, the communication between us is here and in writing, so there's none of that. There was no evidence that that ever happened. So how could we do better if there was no communication?
Well, I think we have to figure that out. Actually, I think there was communication. If you talked to the parties involved, they would say there was communication.
But there's no communication...there's no record of any communication on our end, so how can we do better if there's no record of any communication?
If you just got kicked out of a city, do you take a phone call without taking a name? Do you take that as a verbal over the phone?
Well, they maybe didn't know.
I was going to say, if you're young, they don't know. They're not, you know, they're not...yeah.
I know. I'm just...it's brutal. It's a brutal life lesson, but...
But are you suggesting, Tim, that we don't need additional ordinance that...
I don't know why we would.
Okay, and I'm okay with that.
What you're doing is you're introducing a new business into the city, and you need a peddler's permit to go door-to-door to sell...
We could have...food trucks could be allowed if they come to the Plan Commission, is approved by the Plan Commission.
They often are.
But yet, we have inconsistency, because the mayor denied and said, "Don't," because it's at a motor, and it didn't have a motor. It was a trailer.
No, no, no. That was just the interpretation of a particular piece of the code. What Tim is saying is the process, and that's the process.
But wasn't the person discouraged then to go to the Plan Commission, because you said it had a motor?
No. No.
That's what I interpreted hearing. You told them that it was a food truck.
It was after the fact. It had nothing to do with the food truck or anything like that.
What I'm getting at is maybe that's why there should be some type of a guidance, whether that is something that the Plan Commission would consider or wouldn't, just so people know.
So if someone just set up a dunk tank and charged 50 cents a throw and chase Banks' parking lot... a throw on Chase Bank's parking lot and got Chase's permission to do it and there was a line forming and it was going into the street, I mean, the city would say, what are you doing? You know, you started a business here.
I agree.
Or, like, like I said, a corn stand, just a farmer on the corner of a.
I tend to agree with you that we don't need additional ordinance, but I think it needs to be communicated to people that you could come to plan commission and apply. When you get rejected or not, but you could.
I think that makes sense and it's not micromanaging. I think the, the danger of explicitly calling out particular enterprises is that you end up, like I mentioned, when we're making exceptions for a particular location of a sign in one zoning and not another. When you start getting down into, you know, there's, when we did the big ordinance cleanup years back, we had specific things for like VCR repair shops, stuff that doesn't exist anymore. And when you start getting real granular into specific types of businesses, you start, you do end up with some unintended consequences and you start micromanaging and you create automatic approvals for certain things and not other things. When you leave it broadly stated saying, if you want to change your business operation on those premises, go to plan commission and get approval, typically you're dealing with reasonable people on this side of the table. And if it's a good idea, that seems reasonable and there's not, it gives the, the other people in the community an opportunity to object to it as well, as opposed to just a simple permit application. I, I think the way it is right now is, is good. And if we need to clear up anything to do with a call going into city hall about, if you want to change your business, talk to the plan, you know, get up, get in front of the plan commission and ask them.
And I do know after the fact, because I was not involved in any of the beginning part, that the city planner did, you know, speak to this gentleman Nico and did advise about going to the planning commission and so forth, just so you're aware.
You know, a lot of people, when they look at our code and try and research things, it's, it's all web-based searches for words. Food, food truck doesn't appear, but is there something we could perhaps add to just direct people, say this, this actually would be followed through by the plan commission and per their, so just directing people there. So saying, you know, any businesses such as, and then have, not trying to mention VCR businesses, but you know, specific kind of things, just saying, you know, food trucks, vegetable stands, dunk tanks, any businesses like this would follow all plan commission guidance.
I feel like that's an infinite number of businesses. I mean, you, you could, I mean, if you tried to list every single potential business, we would have 600 pages of.
We would, but food trucks are very popular and they've become more popular.
If any business plan is going to the planning commi, I mean, if it's all businesses are going to the planning commission, why, why do we have to specifically lay out every single?
Those are just examples. If you could just somehow come up with the wording that would just most commonly be found in a Google search, in a control find, in function search, just so it would catch more people, we could avoid this kind of a thing.
I would like to come back to all that. It didn't go well. However you want to do it and whoever you want to blame, I don't believe in placing blame, I believe in finding a solution. So maybe we just simply say, if anybody calls and asks, you know, just a little cheat sheet by the phones or something posted to remind folks that when someone calls, because I do not believe that this person made it up to make us look bad. There was miscommunication and we can own that and just say, okay, well, what could we do better? We could say, you need to go to the plan commission. That took no look up, that took no policy, that just took better, clear, concise communication. And the, the one thing that I can tell you is when I deal with unhappy parents, if they don't like, you know, their kid failed a test because the kid never came to class or didn't study, I don't say, well, your kid sucks. I go, I really tried, I, I understand you're frustrated. Recognizing people's frustration is a huge step in the service we give as a community. And that's not saying we're wrong, you're wrong, it's just saying, how can we do this better? That's my question. I think you're right, Tim. All, I mean, like, and I think you're right as well. It, it, it comes down to, we can't list every little nuance, we just can't.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't think the blame is the important thing at all. I think you're right. It is, how, how do we fix it for the next time? How do we do this? And if, if it's general knowledge, I mean, if, and everybody knows, everything goes to the planning commission.
It's better to overask.
But I, I don't agree with making things so specific because then you're limiting, you're tying everything down and you're making it actually more convoluted than it was before. I like it being general, everything goes to the planning commission, period, that's it.
And like you best consider things that a lot of us would never know. I don't know.
It's usually because we've been burned by something. And, and one of the things about, like, you know, I'm interested to see what Oconomowoc does and if they come up with something brilliant, you know, I love plagiarizing great ideas when it comes to ordinances, but one thing that's real tricky, I, I heard some, something about or read about their idea that they've limited to a certain number of food trucks or in certain areas or I forget what, but if you did have a permitting process just saying, hey, food trucks, we're gonna allow five in the city, sign up for the license, park where you want, and then you get a coffee truck that parks in front of, blue collar coffee.
Blue collar coffee, right.
And then, you know, a, a pizza by the slice that parks in front of the pizza shop around the corner.
And that is a problem in cities.
It's just like, really? Is that what we want to do with the actual people that put in brick and mortar here? So it's.
And that's the problem Oconomowoc's facing and even in Madison where now they're creating districts where they concentrate. So it's, it's one of these things that it's the market. So it, it probably, I don't think we should reinvent the wheel, but if some other communities come up with some ordinances that start fitting within our structure, maybe we should add that in there so it's found.
You know, like I said, I wish it would have, things would have transpired differently. Whatever the conversation was, maybe one person sounded like the teacher in Peanuts and the other person heard something that didn't, that wasn't said, but this would have been a great summer to have a, a food truck in the Perkins parking lot. And I don't see why plan commission would have turned it down. So it's, it's, yeah, I don't know. But anyways, I think the, the infrastructure we have in place right now is suitable to make good things like that happen. And I, I don't see why we'd want to add, make our ordinances thicker. Most of the work we've done in clearing, in helping our ordinance be better is getting rid of redundancies and cross-references or dead ends.
There's plenty of those.
I just want to make a couple of comments and, you know, I, I talked with the city planner and her concerns about different things and, you know, right now the, the ordinance just says that, that they can be approved based on plan commission discretion. Doesn't give any guidance on what that discretion is supposed to focus on. And from our perspective, it kind of puts the plan commission in a position of picking winners and losers. Which food trucks, trucks we're gonna approve, which ones aren't we going to? Right now, there's no restrictions on where they can be located. So Amy and I, we, we do feel like there's an opportunity to improve things through the code. You know, we could potentially limit them to certain zoning districts. We could talk about, you know, how many we're gonna allow in the city, because we should be taking into consideration competition and how they compete with our brick and mortar. We should be considering that, you know, they come into the city, they operate a business, yet they pay no property taxes. You know, we, we need to balance things as far as, they are very popular, people like them, they're a draw, they're an attraction, but there are those negatives associated with them too. And it, it seems like there should be a way to address them without adding much bulk to the, to the code. And I like the idea of us monitoring what other municipalities are doing and trying to copy, copy someone that comes up with some good ideas.
All right. Any other discussion on this topic?
So is that something that the two of you would just, you and Amy would just take a look at over the next month or two and just kind of?
Yeah, well, I mean, you saw that in some of the correspondence that the, the mayor asked for us to bring this to plan commission like in September for discussion by the plan commission. So then the hopes are that we could, you know, potentially pull some information together for the plan commission to digest at that point and start a conversation.
And for clarification, food trucks, forgive me if I'm incorrect, might currently be allowed for one or two days on residential property?
That's a whole other ball of wax.
Well, I'm just saying weddings, a lot of times I see them at receptions.
So if somebody wants, like the same exact scenario, the two current avenues are the business property, the commercial property you're gonna be parked on, apply for a business plan of operation amendment for that business to allow that to be going on on their property. The other one is a special event permit. Those are the two, those are the two avenues that I'm aware of right now. But when you, so when you talk about, because I know the juice, the one juice thing in the Popcorn Wagon, we had very specific lists of where it's gonna be located, these are the hours of operation, those things end up getting fleshed out.
I think what Phil's talking about is there was a graduation party that I went to over in Okachi during COVID and there wasn't very, you know, there was no easy way for the family to set up the food line and things like that. So the simple answer was hire a food truck, park them in my driveway for four hours, have them serve food and they left.
Yeah, right.
And so we don't even require an event, we don't even require an event packet for that. You know, it's not a business, it's, it's the owner hiring them to give food to their guests.
For personal use.
Right.
But like if, but if you're saying, hey, everyone come here, you're advertising a business to solicit as a commercial enterprise.
Philly, you asking more about what I'm describing or?
Well, it's kind of both, you know, it's, I was looking for clarification of what's, what is just flat out allowed on residential property and then to compare that to commercial property because it can be allowed on commercial property now if it goes through the plan commission, correct? For whatever is approved.
So if you do have, like, so if you do, are catering for your employees for a day for a company picnic, I don't think you'd need to get approval for that for them.
Nope. Okay.
But if, if you set it up outside of, you know, Office Max or whatever and you're selling pizza that anyone who wants to pull in and buy it, you're running a business, you're not catering an event, right? So, yeah, explicitly stated in our code, no. So we do need clarity, but.
Like your suggestion of taking a look at other municipalities as well as trying to just clarify what kind of things plan commission would look at. Sounds like a good idea to me, Tom.
Good.
Sounds good. All right. So let's see, you got the right letter here, E. Continuation from providing virtual access to common council and planning commission meetings through Zoom. All right, who wants to lead this one?
I'll, I'll take the lead and then let the council chime in then. Basically, we're looking at whether or not to continue providing Zoom access to our residents for council and planning commission meetings. The participation by Zoom has, has waned considerably where most meetings were getting little to no participation. Our audiovisual contractor has been providing us with additional equipment required to make the Zoom meetings happen properly. He's identified that if we want to continue doing that, he would like us to pay him a negligible rental fee for those. I think it's $55 a month going forward. So it would be a slight cost involved, but probably more importantly is the staff members that are asked to run the Zoom meeting, which is oftentimes Molly, sometimes me, Amy Barrows at the plan commission meetings. It really takes away our focus from what we're supposed to be doing as far as listening and participating in the meeting and especially when, we've had a couple of times where some significant technical difficulties have come up. I know Molly, your, your first meeting, right? There was significant problems and, yeah. So just want to have that discussion and do we want to continue having the, the Zoom access? And if not, is now the, the right time to, to cease doing that?
I think the strongest thing that you said was two things. One, we don't really seem to have very many people, if any, using it and it is difficult on staff to manage.
Do we have anybody on right now?
Olive Garden was there in case we needed them.
Wayne Bean is on right now.
I'm watching, that's troublemaker.
So the, so far the only people that were on tonight were Olive Garden. I think there were a couple.
The one time there was six that I noticed, total six.
So the answer is not many, okay.
I mean, in, in, within the, let's say the pandemic didn't exist, is this advantageous from the point of improving access and?
That would be my only question.
I understand the, the problem with managing it. I'm not concerned about 55 bucks a month, but, yeah.
The city planner has to, you know, not only try to lead the planning commission meeting, but she's got a second computer where she has to manage the Zoom and keeping track of both things is quite stressful.
You know, there's a responsibility of a citizen to, to actually get in your car and drive and that's not a huge, that's not a huge ask for participating in your government.
Well, I, I also think they have email available, most people do.
You can watch it on YouTube, you know, the next day and you can watch it live on channel 25 and record it on channel 25, runs multiple times if you're not familiar.
Could it be brought back as needed for special circumstances? For somebody that's out of state like our cost to community services gentleman? You know, we could bring him back.
Or like a public hearing. It might be advantageous to offer Zoom during a public hearing and just for that period of time and then, but not for every meeting.
I would say Jackie, the one thing is, you know, I would guess more than 95% of our public hearings, no one speaks at, but then we've got the big ones like the gun club and stuff where it might make sense to, to do it.
Well, even, even there though, so just, I'm all for more, more input, more better. But we do get volumes of correspondence in advance of public hearings and we're, I know, I know the city staff is really encouraging people to get those in. And COVID really, we saw more of it, more very well-articulated concise points made via email and exhibits. Or a letter, or a letter, even, even physical letters that get scanned and uploaded. And that actually helps the process quite a bit because it's there in front of us before the public hearing and, and at a public hearing, there's really not an opportunity or much of an opportunity to get new information in front of you to give a feedback. It's already, it's already in the packet, so. And, and a different example, this goes back about 18 months, maybe two years. Prior to Zoom meetings, we had someone jump in their car when they saw something on YouTube and come from a corner of the city and show up to make comments. Because he heard some key word like tiff or something and he got this comment over here. So anyway, but if, if the circumstances lay themselves up, I think the public hearing would, would make sense, but I would say for all of them. You know, see where it seems like it's.
I think, I think, I think it'll be known when, hey, let's, this is the ideal situation to bring back Zoom. I think we can use our collective wisdom and make that decision.
On as-needed basis at the discretion of the city administrator? That sound reasonable?
That sounds reasonable.
How about a member of a committee that wishes to be part of a quorum?
Well, that's a whole nother subject.
Oh boy.
Well, I'm just throwing out.
We haven't done any of that yet, so that would be new, right? That'd be new.
Jim, when we, we've done that in the past with Public Works committee, we usually just do it by a.
Cell phone.
By phone. Okay, so that would be available.
Yeah, that we've done in the past. Just, we hear you, you can hear us, but we can't see you.
You got a hand over there.
Yeah, someone's.
So the question I would have then, if, if it's an ad needed basis, would be how easy it is to kind of duplicate this current setup?
Well, we'd have to maintain the setup and pay the $55 a month. Be responsive to be able to hold a meeting if needed.
We could do it on a trial basis, I guess, or we could just end it. I'm becoming indifferent.
It's worked pretty well before COVID.
I think we should spend, through the end of this year, we should spend the $55 and pay them, have the stuff available and then do it on it by the discretion of the administrator.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Before that happens, you, you need to be warned that we are to follow Robert's Rules of Order newly revised according to our code and this has been covered under Robert's Rules of Order as far as electronic meetings. And I would advise us to review that part first as far as how that has to be approved by this body to have those type of meetings, electronic. So I would just suggest we look at that before we make a decision so that we're, we're consistent with what we're supposed to do.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion and we'll have it put back on next agenda.
Sound good? The second withdrawal, or was it second, right?
Second.
Yeah. Okay. We will move.
Okay, we will move on to F, Schedule 2021 City of Delafield Trick or Treat.
Halloween, baby.
So we used to do, I did a little research.
No, we didn't always do it on Halloween.
So traditionally, while it has moved around, before we moved to four to seven, we were at five to eight. Oconomowoc is at six to eight. Heartland's at six to eight. The Village of Neshota, right, right on their website, it says, we do whatever the City of Delafield does. You should take a screenshot of that.
Why don't we put on ours, we do whatever Neshota does.
I know that it dives off about.
Sunset is at 5:44 and then complete twilight is over at 6:13.
So I'll just weigh in, the reason we, that, that I, that I remember doing it from four to seven is you do get the, you do get the dark.
Not much dark though.
You get, you do get the dark, and the, and the kids do, the kids that want the dark, I mean, they go an extra 45 minutes. But if this is, you know, we, we, we don't shift it to Saturday when Halloween's on a Sunday. Because the people who want to go nuts with their teenagers and their, their college buddies, they go out on, on the party nights. This is, this is grandma, grand, this is like the break for mom and dad the day after when everyone else is.
I also searched my emails for complaints on Trick or Treat. And I have a few where when, remember, it's not always falling on a weekend. Sometimes it falls on a weekday. And when we started four, I have emailed complaints about people not being able to get home in time from work, that they miss the event.
Yeah.
I think it, I think it would be really good to pick a time that works on all days, you know, that we can be consistent with. Though people always know a Trick or Treat in Delafield is from such and such.
I think we always were five to eight until last, last year the council.
I always thought we were five to eight.
Last year the council didn't give a time. They said we want to do whatever the town of Delafield does for the time.
Oh, that's great. Oh, five to eight.
And I called town of Delafield and he's not sure what time they're going to do this year.
I'm advocating for five to eight.
Do five to eight.
I, I can get behind that because.
I thought we were always four to seven.
I'm a carver of pumpkins and they look better in the dark.
So five to eight on the 31st of October.
Yeah.
There we go.
That's my motion.
Second.
Matt, second.
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 Erase this.
Alrighty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions passes. Okay. G, Approval of vouchers payable report date 6/11/21, 7/19/21, the amount to $241,628.11 for accounts payable and $160,210.44 for payroll.
We haven't seen the book.
Yeah, we didn't get the book. It's upstairs. I'll go grab it real quick. I had it in my hand and then I.
That's all right.
So I apologize.
That's all right.
Yeah, it's in my office. It's open. It should be right on my desk, waiting for me to bring down. I'm so sorry.
Do we want me to move on to the agenda while she gets that so we can finish this?
Yep.
Yeah. So why don't you go up and get it and I'll jump. Oh, Amy, perfect, perfect. Okay, then we will jump to 12A, City Administrator, Updates on Market Equation Revaluation Being Performed by City Assessor for the 2022 Assessment Year.
Oh boy.
Yeah, just letting the council know that the revale that was approved is underway. The assessor began that in mid-June, expects to have it completed by October. There is a blurb that's on the city's website, a copy of it's included in your packet that talks about notifying the public that they will be out and about. And they will hit their cars and their, will, will have their identification on it. And each of the assessors that are out and about will have identification. They will be snapping photographs of certain properties and things like that, so.
Do we have any link to the Department of Revenue's site for like the Property Owner's Handbook and Guide? That might be a good, if we could add that, just a link when we advertise that so people understand what their, what their rights are. Because it comes up where, you know, do you have to let them in if they ask to come in, things like that?
Okay, well, the revale we're doing is, there's no entry involved.
Oh, that's, that'd be, that'd be good to note on there as well, but also just to have the handbook so people know what.
Yep.
Because it's, it's pretty straight, it, it's a boring read, but.
But it has the answers.
It could be, we might already have it out there, yeah.
We'll, we'll get that, okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, moving on.
Hey, did you have something?
No, no, I was just going to go to the next item. You got the next part?
Yep. Moving on, you know, I was writing the agenda on Friday and I was going to update the council on the last economic development and land use group meeting, and it was Tuesday night and scheduled for 6:30. And I'm like, Tuesday night? Do we got a Bucks game that night? So what we did is real quickly, we surveyed the members and we gave them a couple of different options to have the meeting earlier in the day, to have the meeting at the same time and ignore the game, or to do a different day. And what we're going to do is move it up from 6:30 to 5 o'clock. So that meeting will be right here tomorrow night in this room, 5 o'clock. And we're expected to be done right about 8 o'clock and getting people out here to go watch a basketball game. So if you have any interest in that, this is the final meeting where they will making, be making the final land use recommendations to the Plan Commission. Number three, we've been having significant issues with our waste hauler contractor. Ever since they took over for advanced disposal when they bought them out last year, we've had an uptick in complaints, an uptick in missed collections, an uptick in not being able to get in touch with anybody in customer service, or taking 40 minutes to get in touch with someone in customer service. But then things really got bad during the Fourth of July week. We were probably fielding about 100 calls a day here at City Hall as far as complaints. They, there was missed collections from entire streets. And I've been calling them ever since, including the district manager. I think I've got eight calls into the district manager since two weeks ago, and I still have not gotten a return call back.
I have to say that their convention has been when we've got a holiday, because Monday was the holiday, right? When we've got a holiday, trash gets deferred by a day.
So their, their, when you said their convention, that was advanced disposal, waste management.
Changed? Oh, because they caught me off guard because I, I almost missed them myself.
On their, on their website, it says when there's a holiday, the collection is delayed a day. And then it listed the holidays and it listed July 4th.
And our contract with them says the same thing.
Yeah. Now, what they said to me, because I, I called, because they missed my whole neighborhood. And hit a lot of unhappy people. And myself included, when I talked to them, I said, really, on the Fourth of July, it wasn't made clear, I mean, this is a holiday. People had gatherings and there's a lot of junk out there. But anyway, they said, well, you know, we observed it on the Fourth. I said, well, so did everybody. That's Independence Day, however, post office was closed on the Fifth and, you know. And there was no, I couldn't find it anywhere on their website that there was a, you know, that they were going to collect on regular days. And so, yeah, it, it was very frustrating.
Yeah, so the feedback we got from Waste Management is that they did not delay their collection and that people got picked up on their regular days. But we've gotten a lot of complaints from people saying they had their garbage out on their regular day and the day after, and nobody came. We've got people offering to show me their Ring doorbell video footage and everything in between.
Well, when you're at home too, I mean, the garbage people are hard to miss, you know? And we know approximately the time of day that they roll through the neighborhood. They were not there on Wednesday.
Right. This is not unique to the City of Delafield. It's happening all over southeastern Wisconsin. There are municipalities threatening lawsuits against them. The City of Waukesha has specific fines in their contract that they're starting to invoke. But I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that we're going through these issues. Has anybody else heard significant complaints besides Jackie?
The only other thing I've seen is that sometimes when there's a holiday and people aren't sure what day, not as, there's not as much garbage out and they end up going through it much faster. So I've missed it a couple of times because they've shown up an hour early than when they normally come through my neighborhood. And a lot of our neighbors will miss it because they don't have their garbage, you know, they normally show up at nine and they showed up at eight. And people just didn't have it out yet, so.
And they're supposed to on their website. It also says that if it's a missed pickup that they'll send a truck out to get it. And one of the, many of us who were missed on Mills Street, they called and they were told that they were going to send a truck to pick up their garbage. And I'm like, that's great. Can they pick everyone else's up? And they never picked up that person's garbage and, and, you know, many people, they took the garbage, garbage out. But some of the people were even along driveways and they're not happy. So they left their recycles just sitting there for basically a week. And it was very frustrating. So I was so excited when they came the other day.
So I think Tom's doing everything that he can here and the city's doing everything they can. But until Waste Management can solve their labor problems, which isn't going to be until September, October, November, I think we're just going to end up suffering through.
It hasn't been too bad in our little neighborhood, except for the Fourth of July.
You know, we, the city, have had significant problems too with getting our, our dumpsters picked up. And like the fish hatchery would, sometimes we'd go three or four weeks in a row without it being picked up. One of our employees was able to get in touch with someone, finally, a customer service. And that person said, well, that dumpster's not even on our list. We don't pick that up. And, and our contract says they got to pick up all the city dumpsters at city facilities. And so it's been a struggle. It's something that we will continue to be persistent with as far as getting in touch with somebody. But, you know, right now, to be honest, it doesn't seem like they, they care too much about being responsive to customer complaints.
That's too bad. They were exceptional. I mean.
Advanced disposal was exceptional.
We're assuming they have labor shortages or we?
Yeah. No, they have, they have published that as a rationale.
Not to you, but to others.
And I, I know they're training.
I've gotten emails from them.
They're training new people.
But they haven't called you back.
Right.
Sometimes they're coming around with two people just to show them.
I talked to my garbage guy and he said, well, I, I said, oh, I don't recognize you. He goes, yeah, they brought me in from New Berlin. I'm just here, I'm just here for today.
Doesn't sound, wow.
So man, a couple of times I have gotten email responses and those email responses typically tell me who my appropriate contact person is. Doesn't, doesn't.
I appreciate.
Please contact your older person.
I, I'm not happy, you know, but I'm glad just to know that it wasn't just us on our little street or just our town.
Yeah, it's, there's been many articles from many municipalities with, all around us with the same complaint.
Thanks.
So I'll keep you posted and as, as you guys receive complaints, please do let, make sure that, that we are aware of them. Lastly, speaking of staffing shortages, we've had problems as far as getting seasonal employees for our Public Works Department. We budget nearly 5,000 hours of seasonal employees as far as taking care of the lake and the parks and the landscaping and whatnot. We're only going to be able to fill about 70% of those hours, it looks like. And it's really had a domino effect on our department. We've had, normally we have one full-time staff person on the lake. This year, we've had a second employee who's had to be on the lake 75% of his time. And then another one that's on the lake on Fridays for pure pickups. And it's really having a trickle-down effect on what we're able to get accomplished. And there are some things, most notably, we've really struggled to keep up with weeds this year. It's been a bad year for weeds anyways, but around City Hall, up and down Genesee Street, our parks and things like that, you'll, you'll notice we haven't been as good with weed maintenance. We've struggled with a lot of our utility maintenance stuff, our, as far as sewer flushing, water valve exercising, hydrant maintenance, a lot of the preventative maintenance type things have been deferred. We'll, we'll try to get to them later this year. Tree work, we haven't been able to do the amount of tree work that we'd like to do to catch up on the backlog with trees. And also the small asphalt patches and potholing that our department is responsible for, we've, we've struggled to keep up with that. So just wanted to make the council aware that that's been an issue. We are going to probably look at proposing another wage increase for seasonal employees in next year's budget to see if that helps resolve the issue partially. But if you do know of any typically college kids or retired people looking for some additional hours, send them our way. We're at the point where we're extremely flexible. If someone wants to work four hours a week, we'll take them. 20 hours a week, we'll take them. 40 hours a week, we'll take them. And we've had a lot of that, you know, normally in the past, we've had two dedicated seasonal employees on the lake that are each out there for 40 hours a week. And this year, it's, it's turned into, you know, one guy out there three days a week, another guy out there two days a week and that kind of thing. And, you know, it makes it a bigger challenge, but it's a reality that, that all businesses are struggling with these days.
Tom, when you triage off these assignments, you tria, tria, you remove them, you identify what can wait and what can't wait? And you do that based on, I assume, safety first?
Correct. Safety first, you know, there's some things that have to be done and some things that are more preventative. And, and, you know, nobody's going to notice we don't do them.
Nobody's going to notice if you don't trim the branch, you know, this year and, yeah.
Right. But even tree work, it's not always just trimming. I mean, if you look around, there's, there's a lot of dead trees out there.
Yeah.
We're still catching up with Emerald Dash Borer and I notice them very much and it bothers me and I, and I talk to the crews. But I can assure you, they're, they're making the most of the hours that we've, that we've got available.
Great. Well, I'm grateful for their hard work and yours.
Okay, so we will move on to City Clerk, Molly.
Or back to vouchers, maybe?
We'll get there.
So July 1st, I got a phone call from Sue with ABC, which is Sally, who does a lot of the meetings and Sue does a few as far as taking minutes and such, and they are kind of folding their company. So they've had a very long relationship with the city. They have been an integral part of our operation and they will be missed. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them and thank them for their service.
They will be missed. Okay, back up to G, Approval of vouchers list.
I'll approve the voucher list. I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Wayne.
Wayne and Jim. Absentions passes. Okay, City Treasurer, Amy's here. Are you doing this one?
I just hear how you do it first.
It's pretty quick. City Treasurer's report, May 20, 21 Treasurer's report.
Need a motion?
It's just, it's reference, right? We don't need a motion on that?
Correct.
No, no additional details to add? Oh, okay.
Normally, if you have a question, you give it to me and then I ask Amy the next day if she's here.
Okay, we'll move on to D, Council Request for Future Agenda Items. Any of those?
I have one. I think we could simply put it, a discussion on the placement of citizens' comments on.
Sure. Okay, number 13, we are adjourned, seeing no further business at.
9:25.
9:25.